Call the Lake Mills City Council to order November 6, 2018. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our regular staff is not here because they are downstairs with the election. And if you haven't voted yet, you have an hour before the polls close if you're watching this live. So we hope everyone does. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
And Mr. Fritsch previously informed staff that he would not be attending tonight's meeting.
Okay. So moving to item three, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes for October 16, 2018. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Shall move.
Second. Okay. And is there anyone with a correction or addition to those minutes? Seeing none, would you mind calling the roll again? Mr. Drescher?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
The vote passed Florida.
Okay. And that takes us to correspondence. I did just mention the voting, so I'll just say it again, that if you haven't voted, you have an hour here at City Hall for the city of Lake Mills. And we hope everybody takes advantage of that opportunity. Anybody have correspondence they'd like to share?
I had a number of emails received this last week. One was just off of a person asking on Pinnacle Drive, a bunch of utility flags showed up behind their house and along the side. So I was going to look into that for them. I had one person comment about the John disposal contract, saying that they are for anything that we can do to save some money there. And then also had a request for some information about the Prairie Fields again in the city limits. I'll follow up with them.
And I can tell you, I checked on that, and the fire department says they don't have anything on it.
You never received anything from them? Okay.
At least Todd hasn't. If it went to Rick, I haven't heard anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have correspondence?
No.
And then we'll move on to questions in public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until that public hearing. The public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the staff before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So it sounds like the people who are here are here for the public hearings, and so we'll move on to item six, city manager's report.
I don't have anything at this time. Wasn't around much. Everything went well from my perspective.
Things went well with your sons. You mentioned it at the last meeting.
My grandson.
A grandson, yes.
Everything went real well. I think we're very pleased.
Yes, we're all very happy about that. Okay. Acceptance of minutes of Public Works Board of August 14, 2018, Housing Authority September 25, 2018, Police and Fire Commission August 16, 2018, and Planning Commission for September 25, 2018. We have received those minutes and they will be placed on file. Okay, item eight, council business miscellaneous licenses. Mr. Drescher, would you like to read those names for us?
Certainly. All right, we have tavern operator licenses for Joseph McGuire, Sheila Stork, Lindsay Waymeyer, Shirley Bonk, Nathan Weber, Alyssa Pearson, Shelley Blomgren, and Brett Sanders.
Okay, and I will entertain a motion to issue those licenses.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And would you call the roll?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
And Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four and zero.
Okay, B, public hearing for the 2019 general budget is now open. And anyone who would like to speak at the public hearing can come up to the podium over here. Please sign in, and you can make any statements you would like to make regarding our budget. State your name and address, please.
Temporarily for Zora Fremont. Those flow charts of the functioning duties of departments, I thought was the most impressive. Got a question, property tax levy, there was a negative 2.5% decrease. Did I read that correctly? On the, is it in the revenue section?
No, it's not on the levy. It's on the tax rate. The tax rate actually dropped. The levy actually went up.
Okay.
2.3%.
Intergovernmental aids went up 27%?
Yes.
And what was, is that for the street projects from the DOT, or is this something that?
It's a debt-related issue that the towns pick up as it goes up on fire department.
Oh, okay. So it's more money from that for the fire department?
Yeah. We issued a bunch of debt, and because they go up, they can't go up as fast as we can on debt issues. We kind of carry that, and then we bring it up slowly. But yeah.
So we shouldn't be too excited that this is going to happen every year then, or just, is it going to bump up big time every so often?
Generally, we try and go up a certain amount each year. But the town of Lake Mills had a pretty good sized equalized assessed valuation increase.
And a minus 44.6 in miscellaneous? What's usually miscellaneous that?
TID.
The TID because of the dark store?
Actually, what happens is the TIDS make payments to the general fund for any money that was given to them prior to the TIDS making enough money to cover their debt. And that, so TID number two has historically made some pretty substantial payments to the general fund. They weren't as, probably as large this year. And TID number four is no longer making any payments. I don't know if you remember, there was a one year where they screwed up on how much the levy, actually the assessed valuation in TID number four was. And then they gave us a great big bump the next year, and then it came back down. And that one year, we had to lend, the year where they screwed up the assessed value, we, the general fund, unreserved fund balance, made a loan to TID number four. It was supposed to be $400,000, but I don't think we made that much. It was more like 300 and some. And they have paid that back now. TID number four has paid that back.
Usually the EDC discusses a lot of TID. We really haven't met in two years, so we're kind of all behind in all of this.
Yeah, they usually don't handle the budget transfers in the TID, though. They generally deal with the new concepts and where we're moving in economic development.
Okay.
And the last, the last meeting they had.
That's two years ago.
Yeah, and we mainly talked about, you know, finalizing out TID number two and a potential for the renewed industrial park. And that's what we've been working on. I hope at some point we have something to talk about.
All right. Another thing I don't like was the debt per capita going up between 2014 and 2017. I understand the explanation. I mean, I always felt that Wisconsin local government was funded by an 1800s concept, but I find that kind of alarming. Is that going to level out in the future, or?
Well, if you, hopefully in December or January, I'll have a 40-page memo that you can go through and make your own interpretation of what's right and what's wrong.
Right. It's almost doubled. I mean, is the council alarmed by this? I mean, this is something that's going to be handled by future city council members. Like, debt interest went up 6.42% this year. That's above rate of inflation, I assume.
Yes, that's above the rate of inflation. And you do that calculation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no, it's in the budget. You put the percentage in increases or decreases in the document, or on the web page, unless I read that wrong.
Well, I'm trying to figure out, I was going to ask you if you, if it's in the budget, what pages it read that on?
Oh, I didn't bring the whole thing with me. I just jotted down the things of interest.
Okay, because we, we're actually going to continue to go up until 2021, and then we're going to start to come down. And there was a combination of issues after, and we've talked about this at the council level, but in 2011, 2012, we went from like 490 million down to 460 million in assessed valuation. And interest levels really dropped, so we refinanced a bunch of our short-term debt into longer-term debt with lower interest. And we have since made a commitment to go back to short-term debt. So if you read our S&amp;P report, and this last year when we borrowed money, 70, about 75% of our debt is 10 years or less, which is a high-quality report. But what we've been doing is shortening that time period up, so we have a lot of old debt that's long, and a lot of new debt that's short, and it's kind of peaking, and it'll start coming back down. So the report that I'm talking about looks at it from a bunch of ratios, you know, like debt, direct debt to assessed valuation, direct debt to total personal income, debt service, and those types of things. So we're probably the, and we discussed debt capacity and debt affordability. So if you were looking at it from the standpoint of capacity, the debt margin is 5%, and we're at 3.78. So that means that we have about 25% of the capacity left. You generally want to stay at that 25% or less capacity, because if you need to borrow money for an emergency at some point, that's important. So that's, that's kind of what we're evaluating. We're also talking about the types of debt instrument. We could change the debt instruments from revenue, from GO bonds to revenue bonds, and then that would change that debt capacity substantially. It evaluates it on the personal income side, so we're pretty low on the personal income side in comparison to total debt. On a debt per capita, we're kind of high, but we're not out of, I don't know if you read the recent league report, but we're, we're not that far off. I do a comparison to a group of cities in southeastern Wisconsin, and, you know, we peaked.
Yeah, I mean, the whole state's messed up. That still does give you a warm, fuzzy feeling.
Well, it's a, it's a combination of, you know, your, your levy doesn't go up much. And so if you're going to continue to maintain certain items, you're not doing it through the operations budget. And you have to, you have to be very careful about what you're putting debt in. You don't want to, you don't want to have debt on anything that's a reoccurring expense like wages or.
Yeah, we talked about this briefly at the Public Works Board meeting.
Right, so you want to make sure, you want to make sure that it's in capital and that that lifespan of the capital matches the debt term. And so we're trying to pull those in tighter. So you're going to, in the report, it shows that like in 2021, 2022, it crests and it comes back down. But it, the one that would bother me the most would be debt per capita. The rest of them aren't, are on the high end, but they're not out of line with what a rating agency would consider normal. And the fact that we have a lot of liquidity and we have a lot of assets balances that, and then they look at our personal income to debt ratio, and they're like, well, there's, there's capacity.
So is this something we have to keep on top of for the next 10 years?
We've been watching it closer.
Because we really haven't had any huge capital projects for a while.
Well, we have, yes, we have some very large capital projects that are on, and we've got those all projected out, so they're in there. I've got them all, I've got all of it projected out, because that was the concern was, you know, having South Main Street and Mulberry and, and several of these other proposals that we've had moving forward is to, if we're going to do it all on general obligation bonds, which is the full faith and credit of the city, you want to make sure that you are within the normal capacity, because you don't want your rating to go down. We're AA+ which is pretty high. But the second that starts, you know, interest rates have already started to creep up, but if your rating drops, that interest rate goes up more. So you, you have that issue of, you know, you want to balance all that out, you want to consider it all, you want to weigh it, and then the rating agencies look at how you weigh it, they consider that pretty substantially as part of the financial management package, and so it helps your credit rating.
Well, you mentioned capital budget projections. Sandy Beach Restaurant at 1.7 million, doesn't that fit the ordinance for any buildings over half million to go to a referendum?
Yes, I, I would have to go back and look at it to make sure, because there are some exceptions in there.
It's for health, public health reasons.
Right.
It was geared towards sanitary sewer.
Yeah.
But homeless restaurant has to do with public health, though.
Well, the restaurant is not, is a public health issue. I mean, the building's not in the condition that it would make it a, a good restaurant.
But legally, we don't have to have a restaurant.
Well, that's true. But if you're going to maintain one, and you already have one, there is the argument to be made.
But if we get rid of restaurant, how does that affect the public health of the community?
It doesn't, but if you continue to maintain one, then you have to weigh and balance the public health.
You have to argue that the restaurant is needed for public health. So, well, I guess that'd be a legal question, but the intent, I was the one who authored that ordinance. And the exception was geared towards the sanitary sewer.
Yeah, it was used on the fire department, too.
Yes, it was. But we were forced to build a new fire department by the DOR, so they overrode the results of that referendum. But the state isn't going to force us to build a restaurant, correct? Yeah.
I'm going to pull this back into the 2019 budget, because that is not part of the 2019 budget.
Well, you mentioned capital budget projections. Debt is.
Well, I'm just mentioning, though, that tonight, our.
But I'm going to gauge how you're going to control debt, though, which is part of the budget.
Well, that's a discussion we'll continue to have, and we, we are working on that, so.
Right, and, you know, projections are just that. They could change very easily. You know, it's for us to try to plan. You know, you've been on the council, so.
Yes.
You know, I don't need to speak to you.
And I sent you documentation of the school board, which uses public input on their long-term planning in another city as well, and I have not seen that yet. And no matter if you responded to my correspondence, I sent it in July. Correct?
I.
I don't know about any correspondence.
The, yeah, he sent in some correspondence that we had talked about at that time, and that's, I think, why we had some of the discussion at the previous meeting on Sandy Beach and why we are continuing to drive that conversation in December and the spring.
Right.
But the, the restaurant one isn't even in, that's in '21.
That's farther out.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right, and we appreciate your thoughts and comments, but it's not an issue that we want to address tonight, because those projections are there to help us with planning, but we're not passing a budget tonight for that item, just to clarify for people in the audience.
Not going to answer why the public is not included in the plan.
I'd never said that.
Well, Todd, that's not true, Todd, come on. We had a meeting here where we went over that whole thing with the, with the engineer and the planner and the consultant who did the restaurant, and we invited, the public was invited. We had another meeting last, last city council meeting, and we agreed that we would continue to have meetings on that where we would include them in that conversation.
Right, and.
And, and I don't, to say that we haven't included anybody is like saying that we didn't include anybody in the planning commission review of the zoning ordinance. But we read every word of it at a, at a planning commission meeting over three years. That's, we have had a lot, and there's a lot of documents out there on what's being planned and how it's being planned, and we continue to discuss that, and are willing to participate in a broader spectrum. But, you know, are we going to, what, what we did with the multi-use center, are we, are you asking us to do that? Because that isn't really what happened with the school district or that other city that you sent me. They, they did, they did primarily what we did with the zoning ordinance at the beginning, which is where they held, you know.
Public hearings?
Well, no, they did a lot more than public hearings. They did, they did lecturets, and they had where they could come in and work over the type of planning issues that were involved in the design and why the concepts were done the way they were done. And then we, we promptly threw them out the second we came time to pass the ordinance. So I, the, the discussion is how much money are you going to spend to review that type of situation? And that was, that was the balance. And they're still talking about how they're going to progress with that. But we've been down this road multiple times on how we include the public, and I, it's a, it's a really difficult question, whereas public hearings, I, I don't think public hearing is a good option. I think, you know, if you're going to do that, you want to invite, you know, focus groups and those types of things. But then if you do that and you spend the type of money that it's going to take to get that done, I would hope that you would listen to what's being done.
I'll bring that up at the next public comment. So I just wanted to gauge a few of the council on how they feel about debt. Steve did a good job explaining, hopefully it will level off in the future. So I understand the pressures, but it's, it's a valid concern, right? I mean.
I wouldn't have put together that memo if it weren't a valid concern.
Because the more interest we pay is less money for salaries and less money for potholes, and I just don't want to end up like the federal budget where a huge portion is going through debt interest.
And I'll answer this, I'll, I'll take this one, because this is an important question that's in the debate. It doesn't take away from potholes and, and salaries, because our debt levy is totally separate from our operations levy. And while our operations levy is capped, the only cap on our debt levy, only control is the, is the debt margin. So then the debate is the difference between capacity and affordability. And affordability is looking more at, you know, what's the type of income status that can support the type of debt in the community. And so you start weighing and balancing those. It's a, it's a little bit different than saying, this is going to eliminate streets. It, it really doesn't. What it would, where we would see more pressure in is interest rates. Interest rates are going up anyways, but if you got to the point where you had debt that a community, that the rating agencies would figure is inappropriate, but depending in, again, it's how you structure that debt instrument. So, I mean, it's a lot of planning that goes into it, Todd. And if you want to come in and go over with me, I am more than willing to sit down and have all those discussions with you, because we're going to do it with as a council anyways, because they're going to get that memo, and hopefully it's readable. My wife said it was boring.
Oh, I like reading numbers.
All right, this is a lot of numbers. This, this is, you know, it's a lot of ratio-type data that, that rating agencies would use to determine whether you were a good credit risk. So it's, it's got about, it's got the current ones, and then it's got projections out. So it gives you a pretty good idea of when we're going to crest, what the debt would look like over that time period. But I, I would hope that, that we would use a couple different debt instruments in that time period that would flatten it out more yet. This projection that's in here is, is, it's as high as I would think we'd ever want to consider.
Okay, I was, I was hoping to hear that.
Yeah.
So I'm not quite as agitated as I was before.
Todd, the section on referenda is 15B6. It's only about five paragraphs long, and it refers to borrowing money for constructing a building. And so everything at Sandy Beach, the borrowing that would be entailed, isn't going to be for constructing a building. Part of it will be, but not all of it.
Oh, the 1.7 million, it's not all building?
I would have to go through and make sure of the details, but a large portion of it is the building.
Yeah, so then it probably wouldn't fall under the exception. But we've, we've got, what was that slated for, 2020, 2019?
No, 2021.
2021, so certainly before we get anywhere near to that stage, we'll have to grapple with having a referendum.
Right.
The only thing I can tell you that we for sure have dropped out of the proposal was the cabins. We're not looking at cabins at all. But saying that we've guaranteed that we're going to do all this is no. But the, we're going to start grappling with the toughest part, which is 2020, which is starting the relocations of the pier, or not the pier. The boat launch.
Well, I'll be back later to talk about public hearings on projects on a night where there isn't so much on the agenda. But I appreciate you explaining to me that, and how it should level off in the future, so it's not out of control. So that's why I came. And it's sad that I don't know anyone in the public who saw that, so.
Todd, I want to thank you for taking the time tonight, but I also want to. but I also want to thank you for taking the time that you did to look at the budget. It's a daunting piece of numbers.
You come asking for my money every year, so I want to know where it's going, so.
But, you know, it takes time on your part. It takes caring on your part. And I just want to thank you for doing that.
Well, the city website makes it so easy.
Well, that's good.
To see what's going on, and it's not that far, so it's very easy, so.
So what did you think of the pages where they kind of went into the budget notes and changes and operations and stuff like that?
What do you mean, the?
Format?
Yeah, at the beginning of the format, they have like the agency department head, and then they have purpose, responsibilities.
I was very impressed. There's always a question, people say, why do we have city staff? You just open up that flow chart and just see everything. I'm starting to see more segregation, like of the yard waste and the trailer park. That's something I always complained about. We needed to segregate more of these special services we offer that really aren't totally related to maintaining property, you know? Special, like cemetery, yard waste pickup, some of the, I guess, whatever you call it. Fringe, not fringe benefits, but something not mandated by law.
Right, not core services.
Yeah, yeah, not core services. So, so it's more clear what the city staff does, so.
And we're actually trying to figure that out ourselves from the inside. We've had a lot of conversations about how to do it because we're, you know, we're so spread out, so thin, and it's hard to keep track of where you're at.
Right. It allows me to go through and say, don't do this, don't do that, don't do this, so.
That was kind of the goal of trying to, we're trying to get there.
All right, all right.
Thanks, thanks for coming, Todd. Anyone else who wanted to speak at public comment, I mean, public hearing for the general budget? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing on the general budget. Move us to item C, ordinance 1194B. Would you read that title for us?
Ordinance 1194B, 2019 General Government and Tax Levy Ordinance.
Okay, this is the third reading, so we need a motion and a second.
I move adoption of ordinance 1194B, 2019 General Government Budget and Tax Levy Ordinance.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Is that the correct one, Betsy?
No, the one that you have in your document is not the final version.
Okay, you have the final.
The one you just emailed us.
And I emailed it to you while I was stepped out. I'm, I don't know how you, how the wrong version got in, I apologize.
Is it numbered the same?
It's, it's got some changes to it that.
But is the title for my motion the same?
Yeah, the title is the same.
Okay.
And the actual totals are the same? It's just some shifting of how the revenues were placed?
Right, and the levies that will be applied.
It's good you caught that.
Yeah.
Thank you for catching. One of the problems of technology, sometimes we get little gremlins in the system and they change things.
That's what it feels like, I'm sorry.
Yes, I sure do.
I don't know how it occurred.
Yes.
This one still isn't right, Betsy.
What do you think is wrong?
It says 72.5 under surplus applied. Is that right?
Well, I printed off and brought the version that you had sent.
That's what we just sent.
That's what you had emailed to me, so I used that.
No, that's not right.
72.5 isn't right?
No.
You have to pull the other one up so we can compare.
It got changed after that? That's what it was in the prior version, too.
Right, and we changed that, remember, to get it, pull it down. It should be 56.4.
No, that's in the capital. That's the.
Yeah.
The 56.4 is in the capital, yeah.
Okay, so the number then, that would be different. Okay, yeah. Okay, so, on the budget that she's emailed, which, that may be the budget that's in there.
No, that's.
No?
No, because the first number under the 2019 proposed taxes is different.
Yeah, under the, under the one she emailed that says taxes, general property, that should say 2,000, 2,538,100 dollars, which is a negative 1.6 percent. And then under intergovernmental charges, it drops from 362,640 to 355,200. And then the expenditures stay the same, so the revenues are slightly different.
There's a slight change in the police department for the expenditures.
It's 484.2.
Could we read the totals from the correct document so that it's?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, so on the, under revenues, 2019 proposed 5,280,500 dollars. Expenditures, total expenditures, 2019 proposed 5,280,500 dollars. Under the debt service, expenses proposed for 2019, 1,576,315 dollars. Total revenues, general fund levy for the debt, 2019 proposed, 1,576,315 dollars. The, one of the items under section two, there is hereby levied a tax of 2,538,100 dollars for all purposes and 1,576,315 dollars for debt service on all taxable property within the city of Lake Mills as returned by the assessor in the year 2018 for the uses and purposes set forth in said budget.
Yeah, the totals remained exactly the same.
So are we all in agreement that that is the correct document now?
It would appear to be. The one that was emailed.
Yes.
The email that we just received was the capital.
There should be two attachments.
Yeah, it's the second one.
Will this be corrected on the website tomorrow?
Yes, I'll ask her to do that.
Does this get published?
Yes.
Okay.
It has, it will get published after we.
Yes, you have to publish the final ordinance.
Correct one will be published.
Right, right, and I have a version.
Correct one will be published.
Yes, and the version that you will be signing is what you're seeing on your email.
Okay.
This, this has to do with the expenditure restraint, and we got that number Friday.
Yes.
So when I got back Monday, we made the corrections. Betsy and I spent all morning long trying to figure out how to make it work. There is, at some point in time, the state decided to include the capital levy in the expenditure restraint program. Not the capital expenses, but the capital levy. So in order to, we had to figure out how to get down to it. And it was an unusually high number, right? It was like 2.9 percent was the total that we could hit.
Right, right.
But with all that, we had a lot of money that we'd shifted to the capital levy, a lot of, and so we had to cut that down in order to be able to make expenditure restraint. But all the other numbers are, the revenues and the, and the expenses remained exactly the same. No changes from what was published before.
Is the council feeling comfortable with the motion on the table?
Yep.
Okay, and I think we have accomplished our goal on getting everything clear. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that and catching the error. Betsy, appreciate you.
Steve caught it.
Yeah. Okay, that moves us to item D, the public hearing on the 2019 capital budget. I will call the public hearing open at this time for the capital budget. If anyone would like to speak on that, you can come up to the podium. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I will close the public hearing on that and move on to the.
By the way, the one gentleman sitting over here is Bradman Erwin. I don't know if you remember him, but he's our engineer. So if you have any questions on any capital projects, he's the guy.
I don't have any questions, does anybody else have? Are you here for the budget?
Yeah, I was here for something else, but I just thought it was on the agenda, so I thought I'd just step in to the other discussion.
Oh, well, that's good, thank you for stepping in.
He had to do a presentation to the Rock Lake, the Joint Rock Lake Committee on the Mill Pond Study.
But you don't have any comments or statements on the capital budget that you want to make at this time? Okay, well, thank you for coming. All right, then the public hearing is closed and we'll move on to item E, ordinance 1195B. Would you read that title, please, for us, Betsy?
Ordinance 1195B, 2019 Capital Budget.
Okay, now, is what we have in front of us accurate?
In the email?
In the email, it is.
Oh, okay, also in the email?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. So we have both items, okay. Okay.
Yeah, previous, if you look at that previously, we'd had 79 something, 79.4 as the property tax levy. And we reduced that to 56.4. And then we have an intergovernmental contribution. The town payments towards the fire department include a lot of capital. And so we brought $23,000 over to cover that. Exact same numbers otherwise, but just constructed a little bit different.
If I can get a motion and we can have her read those corrected numbers, is there a motion to approve the capital budget?
I move we adopt ordinance 1195B, 2019 Capital Budget.
Second.
And a second, okay. Betsy, could you do the same thing you did on the other one for us?
Certainly, just the totals.
Yeah.
2019 Capital Budget, total revenues, 2019 proposed 3,266,200 dollars. Expenditures, total expenditures, 2019 proposed 3,266,200 dollars. There is hereby levied a tax of 56,400 dollars for capital purposes on all taxable property within the city of Lake Mills as returned by the assessor in the year 2018 for the uses and purposes set forth in said budget.
And like the other one, this will be corrected on the website in the morning. Does anybody have questions for Betsy or Steve on the capital budget?
It's just so hard to look at them side by side.
Yeah, well, take your time, there's no rush here.
So the long-term borrowing went up? Between the two? Went from 3179 to 31868?
Are you talking, you're looking at a previous version?
Yeah, I'm looking at the different versions here. In revenues, it's long-term borrowing, went up from 3179,300 to 3186,800. And I'm assuming that's because the taxes, oops. Yeah, taxes went from 86.9 to 54.
56.4.
And that's all part of the levy?
56.4?
No.
Talking about the levy?
Because the revenues were compensated before by the intergovernmental contribution. Should have been exactly the same.
Long-term borrowing should have been the same?
Yeah.
Well, I think he's looking at a version even previous to what's on our.
Yeah, I'm looking at the one that was sent to us or that was part of the website. And then I'm also looking at the one that was sent to us, the differences. I see the numbers come out the same, but.
Yeah, because, so, yeah, that's an old version. We'd adjusted that 86.9 down to 79.4 already.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because you have 86.9 down to 56.4 now.
Yeah, so these two numbers that are in this one only come out to 79.4. And that one was 86.9, so that's a $10,000 difference. That, that was done when we had to do the levy limit adjustment. We had to pull our levy back down to a number. And that, that was because of the change in the personal property tax. So, yeah, that was, that's why that occurred.
But that means there'll be more added to long-term borrowing?
$10,000.
$10,000, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's 70, that was, we did that before I left.
Right, right. But that's what got on the public hearing notice because of the timing.
Yeah, before I left, we did have the, the personal property changes. We just had to figure out how we were going to make those happen. And then, which played into the levy limit. And you took the, the increase that you could take on the levy as the percent of net new construction. But you had to subtract the personal property first before you could take that percentage. And that's what made the difference in the levy limit.
Did the public hearing notice give the specific figures as to what was going to be? be levied in both budgets?
Yes, they're exactly the same.
So there's no difference, that the notice was correct? Okay.
I didn't quite hear that.
Actually, this one will be lower.
Probably nobody will complain if it's a little lower.
Yeah. Because it's going to be $10,000 lower, the levy.
Yeah, so on the capital publication, it said 86,900. That's what was put in the newspaper, that was our estimates at that time.
And you're dropping it, you're not raising it?
Right. No, the only thing that went up was long-term borrowing.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Otherwise, we can call for questions.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, and thank you again for getting us the right numbers.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Yes.
If we go to the next agenda item?
Mm-hmm.
I was wondering if there's a representative here from John's disposal?
Okay, could we move that item?
No, there's not.
Okay, 'cause otherwise, I was going to suggest we move it up.
No, Mr. Mullay is the only one. He's got the conditional use.
Okay.
Do we want to move that up?
Uh, we have to do the ordinance first.
Okay, all right. Let's get the ordinance done. Item E, nope, item F. Resolution 1843, utilities budget approvals currently tabled. Okay, I don't remember.
And they are ready.
Hmm?
They are ready. You can, you can bring them off the table.
Okay. Do we have a motion to take this item off the table?
So move.
Second.
Okay. And I don't think we need a discussion on that. Can we call the roll?
I believe so.
For the, Mrs. Fritsch?
To take it off the table.
Mrs. Fritsch, you want the roll call?
Yes.
Oh.
This is it?
Yep.
Ta-da! Okay, aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, and I've got to get back to the right item on my computer here. Whoops. There we go. There we go. Would you read that resolution, please? Or the title?
Resolution 1843, approval of 2019 utilities budget for the city of Lake Mills.
Okay, can somebody refresh me my mind on this one?
We historically have not approved the budget. We've always reviewed them, but we've never officially approved them.
Okay.
We aren't doing it by ordinance, we're doing it by resolution because ordinance is a law that sets it at a certain amount, and utilities are businesses that fluctuate according to demand. So, while it, it does indicate to the auditor, who then can put it in the audit, which then becomes part of our rating, that you have reviewed that budget and, and have approved it as it's originally conceptualized.
Okay, and this was approved by the Public Works Board, so it has now moved to us, and I need a motion. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve Resolution 1843?
Yeah, I move adoption of Resolution 1843.
Second.
Now, we can discuss it further if you want to. Anybody have questions about it, or are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
You may call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Item G, discussion decision on the 2019 Clean Boats, Clean Water, Aqua Invasion Species Control Grant Program. Right, hang on, I've got to get to that item on my computer here. Oh, wow, news coming up. So, let's see what's here. Would you read the title of that motion, please?
Motion 181111, directing the city manager to apply to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for a Clean Boats, Clean Water Grant.
Okay. We have the complete motion in front of us. This was a carryover from our last meeting where we directed you to bring this to us. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Now, any discussion? Do you want to know anything further about this, or are we ready to vote?
We've done this for a number of years.
Yeah.
Patricia completes it, and then I have to do an electronic signature.
Okay, call the roll now.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, moving to item H, discussion decision on EMS rate increase. Would you read that, please?
Motion 181112, acknowledging the price increase above the Consumer Price Index from Lake Mills Emergency Medical Service and authorizing the changes to the 2019 general fund budget.
Do I have a motion? To approve this?
I, I move approval of motion 181112.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, we can now discuss this. All right.
Is it already changed in the budget that we just passed? Good.
Yeah, I, I wrote the memo. I, I hope that I put it in there that, that it's already a part of the budget, but I wanted to make sure that, that you knew that it was an unusually large increase. Last year was above normal, but this year was really high.
Yeah, was there any explanation? Unless I missed it.
Some of it was population increase, and, and, but it was still pretty high. It was, it was over 5%.
Yeah, that seems really high.
Is there any indication that this is like a fluke and that next year it'll go back to normal?
Uh, there was no indication in the letter at all. It just said this is what you owe us.
Are we satisfied with the services that we're receiving, generally?
Yeah, have, have we been getting the reports?
Have not.
Yeah.
We-
Required reports, I should say.
Does this need to be tabled until such time that we get reports we've requested? Can, can we table this?
You can table it. I don't, I mean, there's enough money budgeted to handle it when you do approve it.
Right.
I don't know that you need to do this in order to get the reports.
Yeah, but we, we were supposed to be getting the reports, right?
Right.
So, I mean, if I was going to ask somebody for money, I'd be sure I gave them their reports.
Yeah, I would be sure I was doing everything to the letter of their contract to make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to, to be able to even ask for more money.
Do we want to table this until such time that we get the reports up to date?
Well, it would also be nice to have a full explanation of the increase, why the increase, what it's, what it's going for.
What's causing it?
Yeah, what's causing this.
We're not questioning that there's an increase needed.
Sure.
But we have to be accountable to the public, so we can't be accountable when we aren't even told.
Right.
I think it would be okay if somebody who represents Lake Mills EMS came and met with you and, and gave you the details, and then you could pass it along to us. I don't think they have to come before the council.
No, no, I don't need them personally.
What was the dollar amount of the increase?
I can't remember, I think it was eight, eight or nine thousand dollars.
We're not messing up anything if we were to table this until such, like, till the next meeting?
No, it's in the budget already, so if at some point in time you do approve it, it's, the money's there.
I'm thinking that's believable here.
Yeah, I, I feel better having a little bit more information.
Oh, my.
I mean, it's, obviously, for an individual, that's a lot of money. For, for us, it's small compared to some other things we're doing, but-
When you look at it from the perspective of that, the total operation levy increase was about $35,000, that's a third of it. And the operation levy covers everything else, you know, wages, cost, increased cost to operations.
I would like to see this brought back at the next meeting with answers to questions.
Yeah.
I need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to table this until we can get some clarifying answers as to the need for the increase, or what the increase is for.
Second.
Can I amend that to include the reports we're missing?
Sure.
Can you add that?
Yeah, and add that we, somehow, that we want to receive our required reports in a timely manner as part of the conversation.
Second, accept that?
Sure, second.
Okay, so, to table it, get the questions, and get up to date with reports. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Can't discuss once we have a motion tabled.
Oh, you can't, on the table, yeah, that's right. Okay, let's take, call the roll, please.
I'm motion to table.
Yes.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
And we have this on the next agenda then, provided you have the information. Okay, let's go on. Discussion decision on John's disposal 2019 contract. Would you read that title, please?
Motion 181113, authorizing the city clerk to notify John's disposal that the price pickup options have been reviewed and the city managers authorized to sign a contract approving the bulk pickup change and 1.9% increase.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
A second.
Okay, now we can discuss this. Is there anything you want that we need to know that we don't know already, Steve?
Uh, I put the budget in, or I put the motion in the positive, so if you vote no, we know that it's a no on that.
Say that again? It's written in the positive?
Right.
So we vote aye if we want to pass it? Yes, okay.
The, um, I did budget the 5% increase, so if you decide to reject it and go with the 5% increase instead, that is available. I did lay out the options in the, in the memo. I don't know that, I think that we would end up taking 5% increase and then looking at going out for bids. So it's, it's probably one or the other, really, with a, you know, looking to go out for bids for the next fiscal year. But at this point, that, it was constructed with the, the requested proposal.
Yeah, so they're asking us to either go for a 1.9 and remove once a month bulk pickups and go to on-call bulk pickups, or go to 5% and keep doing bulk pickups and-
I actually have come to the point where I believe it might be easier to go with on-call.
I, I agree.
I think that people, what we get now is people dumping their garbage down at the Public Works Building because they don't want to wait until the third-
Yeah, I guess the question is, can you do more than one?
You can do one a month.
You can do one a month, I'm sure you could do more than one, they probably just charge you.
They charge you.
They charge you now if you do one, more than one a month.
So, all residents would have, once a month, that they could do bulk pickup, but they would have to call John's and tell them what day it's, they'd like it picked up, and John's would do it as close to that day as possible.
Yeah, it would be a scheduled thing.
I just, I don't know how they save money doing that, especially when they could end up being in the city all 30 days of the month doing-
Well, it's, it's pretty similar to the change we made when we stopped doing, doing weekly brush pickups. When you make, when you call and you schedule, you go from point to point to point, you spend a lot less time driving the streets, looking for it, and you actually have a schedule of where you're going and what you're picking up, and, and it makes it a much more efficient operation. Actually spends more time, less time pounding our payments with a garbage truck.
Did anybody get any calls about this?
I had the one email-
The one you said, yeah.
-where he was in favor of us going to the on-call pickup.
Okay.
That's the only one I received, it was just a single call.
I wish somebody from John's had been here.
Yeah, I thought somebody was going to be here, we'd asked.
Yeah, I, I forgot the call.
Okay.
Because it looks like, from their letter, reading between the lines, it looks like they're still going to come in once a month. You know, like, maybe they'll run their trucks on Mondays, where now it's once a month on Mondays, maybe they're going to do it on Mondays, because they said you're going to schedule it close to the time when you want the pickup. So, it looks like it's not going to be 30 days out of the month, they could be randomly here in the city. They're going, they're going to funnel those pickups to a time that works for them as well. So it might be that people will put stuff out on the curb and it'll be there for a few days?
Yeah.
But then it's going to get picked up, it's better than that they leave it on the curb on the month, on the 30th of the month, and it waits until the third Monday because somebody has moved.
Yeah, or the people that moved don't call.
But I, I think, if, if we were going to go with this, though, I think it's John's responsibility to make sure that they communicate it to the, to our residents, rather than putting that responsibility on us. Because I know when we first started working with John's, they did do an educational program in terms of information that they sent out and, and disseminated to customers, because it's going to be a learning curve. You know, everybody's had it ingrained for so many years that it's the third Monday of the month. There's going to be some disappointed people until they learn that there's a new system. Is this going to start January?
Yeah, they're going to start putting stuff out there still and not know about it. And then when they call, yeah, it might not be another week till they can get out there. They'll be upset they have to call. Yeah, so when is it going to start? And what type of campaign?
January.
Well-
Can we ask them about a campaign for that?
Okay.
Well, we do have our newspaper representative here. When we get the correct information, we can give it to you, and we can give it- And we can give it also to the Lake Mills website, uh, the Lake Mills Facebook people, that a lot of people look at that. And then John's can send out something to everybody.
Yeah.
Which of course half the people will ignore because they'll think it's junk mail, but, you know.
And then the city will get, staff will get the calls.
Well, you know, maybe if they sent it out with a calendar for next year. And then on that thing can say that there won't be a box that shows bulk pickup on that calendar.
Right.
Because there is no regular bulk pickup. And then it can say, call this number. You know, so maybe that could be combined with that in December. Is that something we could talk to them about?
Yeah, I'm sure that they have experience in how to do this.
I like not having to do anything knowing the third Monday, put stuff out there without calling. Sorry, I was just saying, I like the idea of the third Monday staying like that, because then I don't have to do anything. I don't have to call, call and wait online and wait in, uh, voicemail.
But it does give people...
Voicemail jail, I guess.
It does keep, give people more flexibility.
Yeah.
You know, if they're moving out grandma.
Yep.
And all the kids get together to move out grandma, and...
But they still have that flexibility anyway. They could call and they would get charged for it, but...
But this way they don't get charged for it, you see.
Yeah, unless they've done it already.
Yeah, I, I know that for some of us who need to rely on other family members to haul stuff out for them, this is actually, I think, a better idea. Uh, rather than trying to focus everybody's availability for that one weekend a month and then find out that, oh, nope, they got plans. So this, this allows people to be able to have some flexibility and make it work for them.
Also, people who have vacation homes here, they can call it in while they're here.
Yeah, and, and maybe John's can work out something through, uh, their email or their Facebook or something, so you don't have to do it by telephone. Um, I do know from experience, last week I needed to call John's about, uh, missing my garbage pickup. And I didn't get voicemail. I, I got an actual person. So they do have a real person answering the phone.
Yeah. I get stuck in voicemail every time. They must know I'm calling.
I was gonna say, like, they got your number.
They know it's me.
Watch out. Okay, so now we have a motion on the table. But I'm confused on whether that's the motion we want. Is that the motion we want? Now that we've talked about this. What does, would you read back the motion, please? Or is it the motion as printed? That's what it is?
That was what the motion was.
Okay, got it. Okay.
And that's to, to switch to the, uh, scheduled bulk pickup with the one point nine percent increase rather than the one, uh, townwide bulk pickup per month at five percent increase.
Okay, so, so the one we've been discussing is the one that's on the table?
Yep.
All right, thank you. You gotta kind of drag me along with you when you go, you know, so, okay. Is there any further discussion then? Our questions, questions, whatever. Anne, do you have something? No? Are we ready to vote? Okay, calling with question on this.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
I don't know, I don't like it personally, but it sounds like it's gonna be good for a lot of people, so I'll vote yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
But you don't have to.
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
It is a free call, so we do let you vote no.
It is. No, it's fine. It's only, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, your personal preference.
I put the personal preference in there.
Okay. Now watch, you'll get home and three people will call and say, you should have voted no on that. So, okay, moving back to Resolution eighteen forty-five. Would you read that, please? When you have a chance.
Just the title?
Yep.
Resolution eighteen forty-five, establishing schedule of assessment for weights and measures.
Well, this one's short and sweet. Do I have a motion?
I move adoption of resolution eighteen forty-five, establishing schedule of assessment for weights and measures.
Second.
Any, well, you wanna say something? Just go for it. This is housekeeping?
Well, it's an annual, um, charge that is basically passed through from the state to our, um, users of the applicable weights and measure tax. So there's a hundred and sixty dollars that's gathered in. Application fees, that's applied to the, the sum total of the amount that's owed. And then um, each individual license holder is apportioned what is deemed an appropriate amount for the services that they provide.
So the, nothing has gone up though. It's the same as last year.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All right, that's our question on this.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, we now have a second reading on ordinance eleven ninety-six A. Petition for, I'll let you read it, okay?
Ordinance eleven ninety-six A, an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number zero one eight zero seven one three two four two two zero zero seven.
Okay, and that's all we need to do tonight? Okay, and there's no rush on this one, so. Okay, going on to L. Uh, ordinance eleven ninety-seven. This is first reading. Would you read that, please?
Read that one in full?
Uh, title.
Yeah, should we do?
Should, should we, you want to read?
Read the whole thing?
We'd like to move this one to the third reading tonight if we can.
Well, then you better read it.
Well, or maybe, um, Elizabeth could read it and Mr. Drescher could give us a synopsis of it?
Happily.
Ordinance eleven ninety-seven, amending Title X zoning code, guest houses and accessory uses in residential districts. The city council of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin does ordain as follows. Section one, section ten one two, definitions of Title X, chapter one of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is hereby amended to add guest houses to the definition of building coverage and to divine, define guest house as follows. Building coverage, the total horizontal area or footprint of all covered principal and accessory structures on a site, measured from the outside dimensions of the exterior walls. Accessory structures included in the calculation of building coverage shall include covered garages, guest houses, carports, greenhouses, bathhouses, equipment tool shed, and enclosed patios such as visibles. The calculation of building coverage shall exclude the following. Projections such as cornices, eaves, undercover entrance steps, at-grade walkways, patios, driveways, uncovered parking areas, uncovered and unenclosed swimming pools, walls, fences, and covered but unenclosed patios. Guest house, living quarters for guests or servants on a property with a principal residence in an accessory structure or attached to the principal structure. Section two, section ten two one, accessory structures of Title X, chapter two of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. Section ten two one, A, general. Number six, use of accessory buildings or structures. No accessory building or structure may be used for living quarters except as approved as a guest house under section ten four five. Residential districts, detached accessory structures located on parcels in a residence district where the principal use is present, including guest houses and accepting boat houses, shall be permitted subject to the following. Placement of accessory buildings or structures. Accessory buildings or structures shall be situated in the rear or side yard, and they may not have a setback from the front lot line that is less than the setback of the principal building. Percentage of year, rear yard occupied. In residential districts, the cumulative area of all accessory buildings or structures shall not exceed thirty percent of the yard, rear yard. Maximum size of accessory buildings and structures. In all residential districts, the maximum size of an accessory building or structure on a property may not exceed one thousand two hundred square feet unless such accessory building or structure is part of an approved site plan for a multifamily residential use or a boat, boat house as approved under section ten two twenty-one. Section ten four five. Section three, section ten four five, guest house of Title X, chapter four of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. Section ten four five, guest house, C. Guest houses shall have a minimum floor area of nine hundred square feet and a maximum floor area as outlined for accessory structures in section ten two one B and comply with the bulk regulations as outlined in section ten three fifteen I for the zoning district in which it is located. Section four, the amendments and corresponding changes to the square footage requirement shall be updated in table three two bulk regulations in section ten three fifteen I bulk regulations. The Plan, the Plan Commission recommended adoption of ordinance eleven ninety-seven during a regular meeting held on October twenty-third, twenty eighteen. All ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication.
There were certain changes that were made at the Plan Commission. Um, and their recommendation was as follows, based on the signed, uh, Plan Commission memo. There was an aggregate statement that was added, um, that set the cumulative aggregate size of all of the accessory buildings on a particular lot to a maximum level of twelve hundred that is consistent with the maximum size of an individual accessory use. Um, and then also the interior side yard language was maintained rather than removed. And then finally, um, the actual definition of guest house was stated as such, guest house rather than house guest. The ordinance in front of you, eleven ninety-seven, is not the amended version of that ordinance.
Why not?
That is a mystery to me.
I don't understand.
Um, the amended version of the ordinance was submitted, and it is not included in your packet right now. But those were the changes. The language is, um, it, it is the same as is stated in this with those three changes.
We're talking about the Meaden Hunt letter?
No, that predates the whole thing. That basically identified that there was an issue with regard to guest houses as accessory uses within the zoning code.
Okay.
There's a ordinance ten ninety-seven A with the changes that the Plan Commission recommended, but, uh, it's not attached.
Is it on anybody's computer?
I have copies of it. I can go get it right now.
Can you just send it to us again like we did the budget? Changes that...
Well, I'm comfortable doing that if we make an amended motion, or a motion to amend the ordinance in front of you with those changes. I think that would be an appropriate way.
Well, the only thing is, is don't we need to see it before we make a motion to amend?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, I'm not gonna amend something I can't see. I mean, I believe you, but...
Well, verbally, I just explained what the recommendations of the Plan Commission were, and the Plan Commission recommendations are contained in the Plan Commission motion that is signed by the Plan Commission chairperson.
Can you give me the, what is, what is that, give me the numbers for that, that thing that we don't have?
Um, so the, the size of guest house, the minimum required...
No, 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 no. The, the amendment number, the, you said the Plan Commission did...
Eleven, eleven ninety-seven A.
Eleven, okay. Okay.
Do we have a motion already? On this?
No.
No, we just read it.
Um, I move that we amend ordinance eleven ninety-seven consistent with the Plan Commission memo's changes to rename, renumber it to eleven ninety-seven A.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I have a question. Why is there such a rush on this?
Uh, Mr. Voulet is here, and, uh, he originally went to Plan Commission, and there was an error in the zoning code. And so his conditional use application got delayed an extra thirty days. He had a contractor who was set up, ready to go, um, based on the completion of the conditional use permit, but because we had an ordinance change that needed to be made because there was a mistake in the code, he's had to hold off on that. So he'd like to be able to get that going as soon as possible. Um, the changes are pretty minor. Plan Commission had a pretty substantial debate on where they wanted to go with it. And so we were hoping that the city council would look at it and say, okay, this, this ordinance is consistent with what would have been intended if the code were correct instead of having the gaps.
Yeah, because basically, the way the code read before, there was no way he could even build anything.
It allowed for a guest house, but the guest house had to be twelve hundred feet, but it was in accessory use. And the maximum area for an excessive use was, was a thousand square feet.
Thousand square foot, yep.
So it was our mess.
It was our mess.
Yeah.
And we're trying to correct that as quickly as possible and let him get his contractor underway, because the, the contractor also has to make some structural changes to his house. And...
I get it. It's okay. That's, if it's our mistake, we'll fix it. We, I didn't know what was going on, so. Okay. So we have a motion and a second that does what we needed to do, from what I understand.
Yeah, it would amend ordinance eleven ninety-seven.
To include what the Planning Commission wanted us to include.
Why don't we specifically state that in the motion, um, just so it's on the record here? And the, the changes where the aggregate was, uh, the aggregate maximum of accessory uses on a building was moved to twelve hundred square feet, consistent with a single unit maximum or unit, uh, accessory use maximum. The interior side yard language was maintained rather than removed, and in the motion in front, or in the ordinance in front of you, interior was removed, so that language is maintained. And then the third change was, um, the definition of guest, guest houses, just that guest house rather than house guest as it's stated here.
I like that one.
They always, they always do it that way. They put house, um, multifamily, house, guest, house, because then when you look for house, you get all the house-related ones. But in this case, they, it was, someone decided they liked it the other way. There was, there was, um, part of the original ordinance also had that boat houses were eliminated from accessory use.
Right.
So that was, that was part of the original ordinance, but I just wanted to, because when you're looking at accessory use, he does have a boat house, but we've eliminated that from a consideration as part of the accessory use.
Because it's a specialized, more of a specialized use, and it's actually on the water and...
Yeah, it's not a part of it.
And they still have to have a conditional use for that, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So. Okay.
I have a question. If, Betsy, were you able to get those changes?
Actually, if we just get a copy of ordinance eleven ninety-seven A.
I'm, um, in my email account right now, and I'm going to send that to you.
That would kind of cut to the chase.
Heather's been working hard on the polls, so I assume that is probably what happened. I have it right in front of me. I'll forward it to you. There's a lot of absentee voting and...
Like I said, it'll be nice when this is over. We can go back to normal for just a little while before the next election starts.
Until the next thing happens.
You'd be amazed how much... You'd be amazed how much work goes into an election.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Vicky, what is your email address?
Um, Vicky just left, and it's Vicky.
We didn't move fast enough, she'll...
I got pie waiting for me at home.
I will, come...
Sure, right over.
Then we can see your art.
Yeah. We're still waiting on five pieces.
Our art didn't make it yet?
Yeah.
No, that's not good.
Oh, there. The guy's finishing them.
Oh, okay, that's okay then. I thought it was lost in rush hour, so...
So, those of you waiting at home, we're just waiting for some wording here that we need for our motion, which we will have in a bit. So... Sorry about the holdup on your project. I mean, we don't do that intentionally. But it happens sometimes, and so... Okay. So, Betsy, are we, if he pulls that up, then you're okay, right?
Yes.
Should we go on, and then you get that from him?
Yeah, that works.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then we could vote.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Call the roll. Oh, wait, there's an amendment.
This is just for the amendment.
The amendment, so call the, call the roll on the amendment.
Right.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion passed four zero.
Now, back to ordinance eleven ninety-seven as amended.
A.
A, oh. Eleven ninety-seven A as amended. Or don't we put that on there? No.
A is the amendment.
A is the amendment, okay, got it?
I move we suspend the rules to go to the third reading.
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you for that motion. Okay. Call the roll on that.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
So, that takes us to ordinance eleven ninety-seven A.
Third reading.
Need a motion for ordinance?
Do I have to read the title again?
Read the title again, because it's a third reading.
Ordinance eleven ninety-seven A, amending Title X zoning code, guest houses and accessory uses in residential districts.
I move adoption of ordinance eleven ninety-seven A.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, call for a question.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Good time for those little balloons to go up in the air, and like on our emails.
Yeah, why we start to do this conditional use now?
So, you can go get your construction done.
No, actually, we have to do this...
We need to do the conditional use now for it.
It's conditional use.
Oh, darn, we're not done. Okay. Yeah, that's right, okay. Well, we're closer. All right, item M, resolution eighteen forty-six, would you read that, please? When you're ready.
Resolution eighteen forty-six, conditional use permit, Douglas and Barbara Muley, seven thirty-one South Ferry Drive, parcel number two four six zero seven one three one four four three zero zero two.
Okay. We're getting closer to those balloons. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of resolution eighteen forty-six, conditional use permit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything further to say at this point? Or are we, have we said everything we need to say?
Plan Commission approved it, right?
Yeah, Plan Commission approved it. There's all sorts of documentation in here, some pictures to show you what it's gonna look like, and that it's used as a true guest house over the top of a garage, so...
Seeing nothing else, call. Question?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Now you got the balloons, ta-da! Sorry you had to go through all that with us, but it's the way of life. Yep, everything has its way. Okay. Thank you, everybody. That takes us to item N. Ordinance eleven ninety-eight, this is a first reading. Would you read the title of that, please?
Ordinance eleven ninety-eight, an ordinance to revise and consolidate, amend, supplement, and codify the general ordinances of the city of Lake Mills.
Dan, I believe you have...
Yes, ma'am. So, this has been a project that's been going on now for, oh, two full years. More than that, actually. There's, we contracted with a company called General Code to codify our, our city ordinances, and this is the final version. What has to be stated multiple times is that there is no substantive change compared to what the ordinance has specifically said before. It's more of a reorganization and consolidation of the ordinances into a more statutory form that is easier for the public to access, or access, and should be more searchable, more user-friendly. And this is kind of the end of that process.
Did you go?
It's, it's been a lot of work. I know the, the former, my predecessor, Vicky, the former city attorney, put in a ton of work on it as well. As I went through the email history, there was a ton of input from department heads early in the process, and then we've reviewed multiple forms of the ordinances as they've come across my desk at this point. It is still a working, living document. The changes that occur on a, on a basis of council meetings and such, amendments to the ordinances or creations of new ordinances will be handled by General Code and basically seamlessly put into the ordinances that exist after the full codification. So, I provided that link in the memo that I wrote, and I hope everyone had a chance to look at the, the actual format of the ordinances once they're codified. It's very user-friendly, very, very searchable. I think the, the step itself is consistent with what a number of other municipalities, county cities, towns throughout the state have been doing for a long time. This will put us on LexisNexis. Our ordinances will be searchable on a broad base from this point forward, really. So, we'll continue our work with General, with General Source and kind of continue facilitating and putting the ordinances forward.
And when we started this process, I think it was almost two years ago, I wanted it done before I retired, but that never happened. But anyway, one thing about it that I really, really liked was when you wanna draft an ordinance on a new subject that you don't have any real familiarity with, something new to the city, General Code will provide umpteen different sources of similar ordinances that you can look at, and they're already written in the same format as what would fit into our code. And also, because it's gonna be so searchable, especially from a drafting standpoint, when Dan goes to fix something in our code, he will be able to find every instance in the code that it exists in so that you don't have little things that need to be fixed later on because something wasn't caught. And that'll make it so much better. And for the public, the feature that I liked best was that because it'll be online, the public, when they wanna know, "Do we have an ordinance on such and such?", they can just search for that word or phrase, and it'll say, "Well, then, we have an ordinance on it." So, it'll be so much more user-friendly, both from staff point of view as well as from the public. I think it was money well spent. So many years ago.
This is our first reading. We do it in three readings, three in different nights?
Yes, unless you're willing or able to suspend the rules and proceed to the third tonight.
Is there any reason to, or should we just do our three?
We could do it in a normal course, I think.
Okay, sounds good.
We have a time limit, but if we do it in the normal course, we certainly fall within the time limit, so we're fine.
Okay. Well, there we go. And I just wanna find out if Steve has put balloons in the budget. Yeah, so that we can let him go whenever we have these kinds of... I'm joking.
There's, you have council contingency. If you wanna spend enough balloons, you more and more...
Well, gee, we had two things tonight that we could've used balloons for, you know? So, well, actually, we're not done with this one, so we have two more meetings before balloons on this one. Okay, all right. That's the end of what I have in front of me. Recommendations for future agendas.
Just an item with our forwarding, our table, the EMS. I just looked it up. The, the increase this year was three thousand one hundred, three thousand one hundred dollars, and next year it's predicted at six hundred dollars for an increase.
Okay.
That's in the existing budget that we just approved. 'Cause that'll be coming up here in the future.
Then we're just waiting for the reports that we don't have. Okay, is that answering questions, sir? Okay, sounds good. So, we'll put that on the next agenda. And anybody else have anything for the next agenda at this time? All right. Then, moving to item ten, convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin stats nineteen point eight five. When see compensation and performance evaluation data of employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. Do I have a motion to move into closed session?
So, move.
Second.
Okay. And we will not be returning live. We will, when we're done with our closed session, we will then adjourn our meeting from that point. Okay? So, we're now moving to closed session. Thank you.